All right, I'd like to reconvene the meeting of the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, February 21st, 2024. We will open with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item is approval of the agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Let's see, our student member is absent tonight, but I know Dr. Smith has an update.
We have a couple of things to talk about. The first is, not until next month, but you know, you need to mark your calendars, this is a very busy time of the year. The last Blueprint Town Hall session is Tuesday, March 12th, and that is all about teachers and leaders. It is probably one of the central core pieces of the Blueprint. We'll have a lot of information to share that evening, so if at all possible, please make sure that you join us at the James Day Forrest Corin Technology Center at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, March 12th, for our final Blueprint Town Hall session. It'll also be streamed live, as well as recorded and available to be watched after the fact. How wonderful that we have a room full of incredibly high-achieving, first of all, artistic students, but then also nationally board-certified and nationally board-certified, recertified, renewed staff members. It lines up with where we are in the year. As we go through the entire year, we ask every single school to identify an education support professional to be their nominee for the Education Support Professional of the Year for St. Mary's County Public Schools. And there you see a list of all kinds of fantastic employees serving in every single one of our schools, as well as our central office locations, everything from paraeducators to building service workers to fantastic team leads, to safety and security folks across the entire system. It's fantastic. We also have all of our teachers listed, each school providing a fantastic, outstanding educator nominee. This has been also put out in our bi-weekly, monthly, or bi-weekly signal. We are going to be looking at, and then finally, our leaders of excellence. We are then going to be whittling down to the finalists, and then within the next month and a half or so, the actual people who will be representing St. Mary's County Public Schools as educators and leaders and support professionals. And they will find themselves on the wall of fame behind me. Let's see, we also have the Rising Freshman Orientation evenings happening at each one of our high schools, the first week of March. Chopticon High School is Monday, Leonardtown is Tuesday, and Great Mills goes last on Thursday, March 7th. This is a great opportunity for the students and their parents to see the schools their children will be attending, to be introduced to some of the faculty, to the administrators, to the counseling staff, as well as some of our fantastic student leaders who will show them around the school and give them an insight into what it means to be a high school student in St. Mary's County Public Schools. Next week, so soon, next week, we have the State of the Schools coming up on Thursday evening, February 29th. Not Thursday evening, it's a lunch in the middle of the day. The St. Mary's County Chamber of Commerce hosts a State of the School opportunity for us all to gather and talk about the important work of St. Mary's County Public Schools. Afterwards, it will be posted to the YouTube channel, so you can take a look at it. This year, we are continuing our theme, and if Lillian was here, and she will be part of this, certainly all the students in the Slack group will be there as well representing, but we're continuing on our theme of the St. Mary's County Public Schools, Students and Staff Care. They are connected, accountable, resilient, and excited to learn, and they'll be sharing fantastic examples of what that looks like at all levels across St. Mary's County Public Schools. Here we are in February, as it draws quickly to a close. Tomorrow, All County Elementary Band and Orchestra at?
Chopticon.
Chopticon High School. Chopticon High School, look forward to that. And then the State of the Schools, All County Theater. And I'm not sure where that is on Friday, the 1st. Is that at Great Mills? All right, so you just have to work out something to find an opportunity to go see Leonardtown, and there you go, you got all three schools. We don't have a student member report because we miss her this evening, but we will certainly be hearing from her in the upcoming weeks at all of these gathered events. And so with that, I turn it over to Chairperson Bailey.
Okay. All right, so we will jump right into the first of our recognitions, which Ms. Lorick is somewhere in the back.
All the way in the back.
With the National Board Certification.
It's the myriad of people.
And as she makes it to the podium, I will offer congratulations to both the SMAC, what, Chopticon Varsity Boys made it to the SMAC Championship but fell short last night, as well as the Leonardtown Varsity Girls, who also made it and also fell short. But valiant effort for both of those teams.
Fantastic, fantastic season. Yep, absolutely.
There you go. See? Fill her.
Good evening, Superintendent Smith, members of the board. Thank you for inviting us to recognize some of our amazing staff here at SMCPS this evening. My name is Sarah Lorick, and I am the Supervisor of Strategic Initiatives. Over the past year, part of my role is supporting the National Board cohort, along with Colleen Gill and Denise Eichel. We are proud to be here tonight to celebrate our National Board teachers. The National Board for Professional Teaching Standards Certification Assessments are the only nationally recognized system for certifying accomplished teaching in the U.S. The National Board Certification and Maintenance of Certification processes were designed by teachers for teachers. It allows those who take on the rigorous journey to hone their skills and foster a deeper understanding of content while improving student learning and achievement. The National Board process is extensive, involving performance-based assessments, including teacher portfolios, student work examples, recorded lessons, deep reflection, and thorough analysis of the candidate's classroom teaching and student learning. The certification is a demonstration of teaching practice as measured against high and rigorous standards. Within the Blueprint for Maryland's Future, National Board Certified Teachers receive additional incentives, including financial stipends and considerations for placement on the Blueprint's career ladder. In addition, further compensation is awarded to teachers that are at Blueprint Schools. During the 2223 submission cycle, we had 29 candidates that submitted all four components. We had many more who at least did a partial, but we're going to talk about our fully submitted candidates tonight. Of those 29, 10 became newly board-certified, and six retained their certification. This has led to a 29% increase in the number of national certified teachers in SMCPS. SMCPS is proud to offer a variety of resources and supports for the now 85 National Board candidates in this year's submission cycle. This number keeps increasing, it's very exciting. This number includes teachers that are new to the process, who are continuing, or those who are working on maintaining their certification as well. To help them through the process, we have a number of supports, including training staff on iPads and Swivel usage, and acquiring professional learning facilitators who offer a variety of professional development and guidance for those National Board candidates. Last year, we had 14 facilitators working with our cohort. This year, we have 19. These PLFs are all National Board Certified teachers who offer system-wide sessions, both in-person and virtually, school-site sessions for those that had four or more candidates at their site, as well as facilitators who offer support for content-specific expectations, like the generalist, the music, science, exceptional needs. These certification areas have unique processes to them, so we want to give them guidance. We appreciate these National Board teachers who have gone on to be PLFs because they go above and beyond to ensure that our current candidates are well-supported. I'd once again like to offer thanks to Ms. Eichel and Ms. Gill for their leadership and support in the National Board process. It's great to work behind the scenes with them as we focus on removing barriers and elevating candidates working through the National Board journey. And now, the board is proud to recognize our National Board Certified teachers. Dr. Smith, would you join me in presenting?
Certainly shall.
We're going to begin with those candidates that received their initial certification in this cycle. So we're going to ask you to come on up and receive your plaques. First is Christine Allen, Hollywood Elementary School. Next is Melissa Chu. Yes, Melissa. Next is Melissa Chu at the Tech Center. We have Jennifer Campbell at the Charter School. We have Jennifer Cord at White Marsh Elementary School. Christine Driscoll at Benjamin Bannaker Elementary School. Amy Howell at the Tech Center. Shiggy Jo at Great Mills High School. Arnold Skinner at the Tech Center. Philip Tom at the Tech Center. And Heather White from Benjamin Bannaker. I'll see all those hiding in the back, we'll fix that. Okay. For those who hold national-- For those who hold National Board Certification, they are responsible for maintaining that certification every few years. And tonight, we're going to recognize six teachers who completed and passed that certification process. I should also say that these are not all teachers. Some are supervisors, as well as principals, so that's really exciting for us. Our first one receiving certificates today is Ms. Co-- excuse me, is Ms. Julie Chamberlain Huber at Benjamin Bannaker. Next, we have Colleen Gill in the Department of Curriculum and Instruction. Next, we have Dr. Kentina Quick-McQueen at Greenview Knowles Elementary School. And we have Bernadette Sheets at the Virtual Academy. We have Marjorie Walsh from Great Mills High School. And we have one more who couldn't be with us tonight, and that's Brett Johnson at Chopticon High School. So we thank Brett as well. Beyond these 16 individuals, SMCPS has 28 additional teachers who hold National Board Certification. We are very proud of that number. So if you would, please join me in congratulating these outstanding educators, and I'll turn it over to you.
So, the Blueprint for Maryland's Future says the gold standard is National Board Certification. So, you represent, you powerful 10. The first group coming through, as we've gone through all of this, to be nationally board-certified, under the Blueprint auspices, which of course entitles you to all the fantastic benefits from that as well, so congratulations. For those who have renewed, and renewed while not being in the classroom, finding your way to it, that is truly a wonderful dedication. That is amazing. So at this point, can we, how would we like to have them staged so that we might have this most appropriate? I think that would be probably best. We definitely want to have our powerful 10 in the middle with your fantastic plaques, and then flanked by our renewals.
And I will say that Ms. Driscoll was my daughter Leslie's first-grade teacher. She'll be 32 next.
All right, so we need to have like five over here, so keep going, right, so there we go.
And you gotta be within the width of the table, you might have to go too deep.
Oh, we're centered.
Yeah, come out a little. Then we want to have you, our renewal flank, flank, and show proudly.
Okay, everybody needs to get a little closer, don't be shy. Turn to the side.
Snuggle up, guys.
Unless somebody wants to say something.
Okay, listen, it's only gonna take about an hour.
Go for it. We can have it on. There you go.
You have to, this is--
Really?
Yes, of course, well, that's lovely.
It's really just a thank you. I'm a military wife, I've been all over the place, and I've had different levels of support everywhere I've gone, and I think it's pretty fantastic what this district is doing. So quickly, I just wanted to thank the board and the district for recognizing the value of earning your National Board Certification, offering financial support, as well as the aid provided by mentors, is what makes this achievement possible. I first earned my certification 10 years ago in North Carolina. As a military wife, I have taught in several states and districts where this opportunity was out of reach for many of my fellow teachers. I know for a fact that I'm a better-reflected practitioner because of my experience with this educational journey. The opportunities provided here will play a pivotal role in years to come, as more educators take on the process, readily challenge themselves, share new knowledge, and build confidence as an educator, ready to meet the vast needs of our students that we have today. So, I just think it's pretty neat, like, to encourage others, that a lot of people are afraid, you know, they'll ask and say like, "Well, how hard was it?" Yeah, it's hard, but when you have the support, like, you've got this. And I'm really proud of my Bannaker peeps on their first time.
Okay, Scott, you may just stay up there, because now we have Mr. Burrows, somewhere. There he is in the back, with the superintendent's art gallery, for the second marking period.
Dr. Smith, you could join me with the famous--
That's the only exercise I'm getting today, so.
Well, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Tonight, we are here to celebrate those students whose artwork was selected to appear in the second superintendent's art gallery of the 2023-2024 school year. For the gallery, each quarter, artwork is selected to be displayed here in the board meeting room and in the hallway leading to Dr. Smith's office. At the conclusion of the quarter, we then gather to celebrate and recognize those students. As I always say, thank you for your continued support of our programs. Without your support and the support of Dr. Smith and his cabinet programs, like this one could not happen. So truly, thank you. It's one thing to hear those words, it's another to feel them, and I truly believe we feel them when we see the smiles and the looks of pride and accomplishment on the face of the young artists when they are recognized at this event. So again, thank you for your support. Artists joining us tonight, when I call your name, please come forward to receive your certificate, and after, please remain, because they will have individual and group photos. So, please note, the school listed on the artwork denotes the school in which the artwork was created. So without further ado, let's celebrate our artists. From Town Creek Elementary School, with the piece Fire Girl, Lucia Anutado. From Hollywood Elementary School, with an untitled piece, Nicholas Siaka. And thank you to Principal D'Renzo and our teacher, Mr. Newer, for attending. Thank you. Although not in attendance, we would like to recognize, from Great Mills High School, Leona Noe, with her piece, Leona's Self-Representation. From Oakville Elementary School, with an untitled piece, Olivia Richards. And thank you to Principal Anderson and our teacher, Mr. LeBeauz, for attending. And finally, although not in attendance, with an untitled piece from Spring Ridge Middle School, Andrea Thomas. But accepting on her behalf is one of our Spring Ridge Art Teachers, Mrs. Maraz.
There you go.
Thank you, and congratulations once again to all of our student arts.
I just want to very quickly echo Todd's words. This is something fantastic, it can't happen without the support of the board. It can't happen without the support of the fantastic art teachers and administrators and staffs at the school who encourage you to express yourselves through art. Don't you, yes you do, and there it is. Thank you so much for sharing your art with us. And, might I say, you should consider becoming an art teacher. And be nationally board-certified, and you could be up, I mean, come on, that would be great. All right, so we're gonna get a picture, and then we'll get a picture.
And it's a student, so if you would stand with your artwork, you can even hold it in front of you if you'd like.
You shall get fired. You shall get untitled, but I've been calling it the one.
Love the expression, Nicholas, on that, on your lion.
Look at the paparazzi over here.
And so at this point then, if you want to be joined by parents, or teachers, or principals, or group, please, the room is yours. Enjoy. There you go.
Do you not have a public hearing? Do we have any public comment?
No public comment.
Okay. Then, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Tonight's consent agenda consists of the approval of minutes of February 7th, 2024, the 2024-2025 Board of Education meeting schedule, personnel teachers, personnel administrative and supervisory, and Department of Maintenance, chiller and rooftop AC units, preventative maintenance and repairs. With that, I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. We do not have any action items, but we do have one information item, which is Ms. Woodley and Ms. Sweeney with celebrating Black History Month.
I've relinquished the clicker, so I can't help you, Ms. Woodley.
Let's see, which one is ours? Ah, this one, this one here. All right. Good evening, everyone. Mrs. Sweeney and I are proud to present to you what we believe to be historical information, additional samples of students' artwork, and their interpretations of Black history. It is also intended to be a resource used to recognize this national observance, and others, and our community can get a glimpse of the role and presence Black and African-American history has in our daily lives. So how did this national observance come to be? In 1926, a Harvard-educated man by the name of Dr. Cartagie Woodson felt it was important that the imprint of Blacks and African-Americans needed to be acknowledged and celebrated. Dr. Woodson established what became known as Negro History Week, and for the next 50 years or so, communities, organizations, and states gave tributes to African-American leaders of excellence and change. In 1976, coinciding with our nation's bicentennial, President Gerald Ford expanded these tributes to a month-long celebration, now known as Black History Month. He was quoted saying, "Seize the opportunity to honor the too often neglected accomplishments of Black Americans in every area of endeavor throughout history." Some may ask, why was the month of February chosen for Black History Month? Well, Dr. Woodson was inspired by two great Americans, President Abraham Lincoln and abolitionist Frederick Douglass, who were both born in the month of February. Also, the establishment of the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, known as the NAACP, was birthed on February 12th, 1909. Today, communities across the nation, through their uniqueness and diversity, recognize and give tributes to Blacks and African-Americans who are in the bedro- recognize and give tributes to Blacks and African-Americans who are in the bedrock of our nation's greatness. As educators, we take responsibility for adhering to curriculum standards so that all students receive a well-rounded education, and students understand that when they are learning about leaders who happen to be Black or African-American, they are in essence learning American history. This next slide gives tribute to leaders who are associated with the state of Maryland and St. Mary's County, who had a profound impact on the many areas of endeavor, as alluded to by President Ford. Time will not allow me to go over everyone shown here, but I will bring your attention to a few exceptional leaders who made history in St. Mary's County. First, we have the highly respected champion of children and epitome of kindness, St. Mary's County Board of Education member, Mrs. Mary Washington. Mrs. Washington.
Thank you.
You're here in the room.
Mrs. Washington was a loyal parent volunteer for eight years before she decided to run for office. Mrs. Washington was elected to the Board of Education in 1996 and has consecutively held that selected seat for twenty-seven years. She is the longest-seated Board of Education member in the state of Maryland. She was appointed to the Maryland Association Boards of Education, the Board of Directors in 2000, serving for six years on the Legislative Committee and co-chair of the MAAB Conference Committee. Her jovial presence is felt during her many school visits, classroom times, and extracurricular activities. So we thank you, Mrs. Washington, for your longevity and leadership.
And I'm thankful for the opportunity to serve. I feel honored and humbled by the support of the citizens of St. Mary's County. This is my purpose, passion, and calling in life.
Thank you.
You do it well.
Thank you.
We will continue with Joseph Lee Somerville Sr., who was born and raised in Loveville, Maryland. He was the first Black deputy hired in St. Mary's County. And after numerous upgrades and rank, he was appointed by the governor to be the sheriff of St. Mary's County. At the end of his term, he ran for sheriff and was the first Black elected sheriff in St. Mary's County and in the state of Maryland. In 2022, the ten-mile stretch of Point Lookout Road from Birdie's Right There at the Light to Wawa is now dedicated to his honor and service. Mr. John G. Lancaster and Mr. Tyrone Harris both saw recreation as a necessary and required fixture in our community. Both men believed mentorship was an integral part of uplifting youth and could influence their decision-making and career choices. Mr. Lancaster, like yourselves, was a St. Mary's County Board of Education member and a two-term St. Mary's County Commissioner. Mr. Harris worked with recreation and parks for many years and ensured children and families had a safe place to play sports and host community programs throughout our county. Before Mr. Harris's untimely death just past December, he oversaw the forty-seven-acre park known as Lancaster Park, dedicated to Mr. Lancaster. Elmer Brown Sr. was born in Drayton, Maryland, and had a booming voice for education and equality. He believed and would tell others, "Always do your best, otherwise you're cheating yourself." He was affiliated with numerous events in St. Mary's County, such as the Salt and Pepper Community Chats and the Unified Contributions for Afro-Americans Committee, also known as UCA-C, and their annual Juneteenth celebrations. In 1994, Mr. Brown and others successfully appealed to our county commissioners to erect a monument dedicated to African-Americans. This pyramid-shaped monument now rests in Freedom Park, located in Lexington Park. And then we have the Somerville Brothers. They too were born and raised in Loveville, Maryland, and each had a love for big families and serving their community. The three shown here, Joseph, James, and John, were the three brothers, were the only three brothers on record who served together as permanent deacons in the Catholic Church. We have four schools in St. Mary's County that are named after notable Black Americans who have made important contributions to our history. They are Mary McLeod Bethune, George Washington Carver, Benjamin Bannaker, and Dr. James A. Forrest. Bethune Elementary opened in 1961 as part of the diner Bethune Elementary School complex. In later years, it housed the Department of Information and Technology Services. Carver and Bannaker Elementary Schools were originally secondary schools that only served African-American students. Today, they provide education to all students from pre-K to fifth grade. The Career and Technology Center was named after Dr. James A. Forrest, who was born and raised in Ridge, Maryland. He was an influential man whose community advocacy earned him a position on numerous boards and organizations. His voice was instrumental in the desegregation of public schools in St. Mary's County. Dr. Forrest was appointed to the St. Mary's County Board of Education and later served as its president. The Dr. James A. Forrest Career and Technology Center offers opportunities to students for students to learn technical skills under the supervision of the Tech Center staff. Mastery of these skills allow for students to earn industry-certified certificates and college credits in the varied programs offered at the Technology Center. This year's theme for Black History Month is African-American in the Arts. An artist is defined as a person who creates using conscious skill and creative imagination. As these pictures show, and what we saw here today, St. Mary's County students can express their creativity through many forms of art. This is all through the purposeful planning and instruction by our wonderful teachers. Earlier this month, Mrs. Washington, Dr. Smith, and others were invited to Great Mills High School by the Black Student Union for their first career conversation series. Ms. Renee Dyson, a former graduate of Great Mills High School, a business owner and makeup and hair artist, was their first guest speaker. As you see here, she was interviewed by two of the Great Mills High School students and shared with the audience how her passion for wanting to make her friends and herself look cute for school, combined with the no-nonsense guidance from business teachers at Great Mills, allowed her to have a rewarding and lucrative career in the film industry. Her most recent work was on the movie set of The Color Purple. Borrowing from Dr. Smith and Ms. Keebler's theme, "We Care", we have put together some samples of our students being connected, accountable, resilient, and excited to learn about Black history. Through the watchful guidance and support of our teachers and support staff, all students can express their creativity, expand their knowledge, and explore new paths to understanding the world in which we share with one another. We care about performing arts. Our schools provide opportunities for connections, teamwork, and community service where our students can showcase their very many varied talents. We care about researching historical figures. Here we have some of our students' final projects showcasing the research of Black Americans who have been an integral part of creating history. Dr. Janice Walthauer, a former principal, continues the work of reminding us that Black history is American history. Our partnership with the St. Mary's County Public Libraries extends learning for our children outside of school hours. There, on this picture here with the man in the middle, that's Mr. Darren P. Stewart, who portrayed Langston Hughes, a famous writer and poet. And we care about education. Our teachers and staff are dedicated to creating experiences for children to learn, have fun, and demonstrate their competencies in a variety of ways. In the classrooms, media centers, or doing hands-on activities, each day of learning becomes a part of a child's history. When teachers are reminded by former students the impact they had on a young boy, his story is made. Just as our 2023 Teacher of the Year makes a positive difference in the lives of children, her story is made. There are so many daily occurrences of exemplary teaching and achieving, and so many opportunities to bridge academic and non-academic goals. Black History Month is another opportunity to show we care. Thank you.
Questions?
Thank you for putting that together. It was really wonderful.
Thank you.
I do love that you got the gigantic boa constrictor that comes out every year that scares the living daylights out of me.
An ant boa.
Every year it comes back.
I absolutely, I absolutely love that graphic. That is just, that is just the most, that's awesome.
Yes.
Perhaps you can find a way to work it into the state of the schools next week.
I would imagine you'll see something.
Might I see that?
You might see something like that. We'll take great inspiration.
All right, let's see. Our next board meeting is going to be on Wednesday, March 6th. Executive session will begin at 8:00 a.m., and the open meeting begins at 9:00. And with that, we are adjourned.